Good night, thank you. Thank you Sister Hillary. Can somebody give me a thumbs up or emoji if you're hearing me clearly?
Clearly.
Thank you. Alright, so thank you so much for the privilege and opportunity to share tonight. It's been a while since I've been given this privilege. And so before we begin, I would like for us to pray and then we're gonna dive right in. And so Lord, we just wanna thank you that your word is live and it is active. And I pray, Lord, that even as we dissect and discuss the truth of your word, that your Holy Spirit will tabernacle with us, will give insight and revelation. I pray mighty God that that my voice will not be what persons hear, but persons will have sweet communion with you and that you will speak directly to their hearts and their minds and that it will inspire and ignite a fire inside of them that will allow each person to recognize that we have a mandate, we have a responsibility and we have the capacity to share the truth of who you are. And so we ask that you will take this time and allow yourself to be known to each of us here and those who are about to join. In Jesus' name I pray, amen. Alright, so tonight and next week, we'll be discussing the topic commissioned to truth. And I don't know if that rings anything in anybody's mind. I don't know if you guys are comfortable with unmuting and muting, but I really hope that everybody can find their button and we can have good conversation tonight. So what comes to mind when you hear commissioned to truth? Anybody? Good night Hillary. Oh, sorry. Good night Brittany. Go ahead.
Oh, what comes to mind is that we are commanded or sent out to speak the truth. We can't, we have no other option but to live in truth, walk in truth and speak the truth to others.
Okay, thank you. So that's what we're gonna be talking about. We're gonna be talking about the importance of sharing our faith. We're going to ultimately end this series with different things that we need to know to assist us in those conversations that might require us to defend our faith. And so I just wanna go through the agenda so that we can talk about it and then we're gonna just dive right into it. So tonight, we're gonna be basically going through introduction. Why do we share our faith? Who saves? Why do we defend our faith and what do we need to know when it comes on to sharing? And I heard this quote probably a week ago and it really resonated with me. And it says that there are no ordinary people. You have never walked to mere, you have never talked, sorry, to mere mortals. It is immortals. We joke with Mary, snob, exploit. Sorry, trying to make my thing smaller. Exploit either immortal horror or everlasting splendor awaits them. And that's C.S. Lewis that said that. And he was a part of a sermon that he preached originally in 1941. And I found that to be so profound because sometimes we can forget that the people that we're interfacing with, the people that we are talking to, the people that we are dialoguing with, our persons who will one day be gone. And the truth is that we all have a life after death and that life is either hidden in Christ or it is without him. And so the idea is for us to first understand the weight of what is at play when we choose not to or when we consider that we don't need to participate in sharing or faith. And so the question is really, you know, why do we share? At the end of the day, everybody's going to meet their Savior or their maker, as we like to say in Jamaica. And I find that we need to consider what will it take for us to come to a sobering urgency? And that is really the prayer and the desire of my heart tonight that we will come to a place of sobering urgency to see that yes, the world seems to be getting darker and darker. But our coworkers, our neighbors, our friends, our colleagues, or siblings will either be in everlasting splendor or immortal horror as a result of the decisions that they make in this life. So why do we share our faith? Anybody knows why? Anybody has any thoughts on why do we share our faith? I mean, I know I just dropped a bomb here and there, but outside of that, why do we share our faith?
Okay, good night everyone.
Good night, Sister Danbar.
Yes, it is. We share our faith because we want others to come to know the Christ that we know. We share our faith because it is the command of the Lord. He said, we should go and we should teach and we should make disciples of others. And so that's two reasons why we share our faith. There could be many others as well.
Okay, and so that's where we're gonna go first. The first thing is that Christ commands us to share our faith. We share our faith out of a love for Him, out of a command. Matthew twenty eight, eighteen to twenty, which we're gonna talk about and look at. We also share our faith out of obedience to Christ. And we also share our faith because we love Christ. And so when it comes on to the mandate from Christ, I don't know who has their bibles, but Matthew twenty eight, eighteen to twenty, if somebody can find that for me. And we're gonna read it. Because this is Bible study, right? We're going open more Bible, we're going to read it, to go and talk about it. That's my understanding of Bible study.
New Living Translation.
Go ahead, no problem.
Disciples. I've been given, I have given, I've been given all authority in heaven and on earth. Therefore, go make disciples of all nations, baptizing them in the name of the Father and the Son and the Holy Spirit. Teach these new disciples to obey all commandments I have, commandments I have given you. And be sure of this. I am with you always, even to the end of the age.
So this is, this is, I like the annality. I also like the amplified. And so Matthew twenty eight, eighteen to twenty, if you look at it in the amplified, it says Jesus came up and said, "All authority." And when we're talking about all authority, we're talking about all power, absolute rule in heaven and earth has been given to me, me, Jesus. I want us to think about, you know, what was happening when the Great Commission was given? Does anybody know? I think this is one of the things that kind of struck me earlier on in my Christian journey. Because for a long time, I thought that Jesus Christ came, he died and he rose from the dead. But you know, you kind of feel like it had happened in our little corner. But to read the Gospels and to read the Scriptures yourself and you start to realize, oh, but people had conversation, people recognized who he was and many saw him ascend. And so the Great Commission is actually what are what we call the Great Commission, which is Matthew twenty eight, eighteen to twenty, is what was said right before he ascended. He gives them this mandate, this instruction, this is after the resurrection. You know, so he has died, he had died, he has no risen from the dead. He has fulfilled the prophecy and he's now commissioning his disciples. He's giving them instruction. And he says, "Go therefore and make disciples of all the nations. Help the people to learn of me, believe in me and obey my words." And so one of the things I want us to appreciate is that it is one thing to share Christ. It is also part of the intention that we would walk journey with people, that we would disciple people, that we would encourage people. For those of you who know my story, that I accepted Christ when I was eleven, but I was taught the details and certain aspects of my faith by friends in high school. The first person to taught, to teach me, sorry, how to share my faith was a friend of mine who showed me how to do that. The first person to teach me how to study the Bible for myself or a group of girls, some of them you know, and all of them are my friends to this day. And so the idea that you need to be some kind of specialized Christian to share your faith is something that I want us to separate ourselves from and to recognize that the sharing and the mandate of the gospel is something that is for all believers. And because Christ lives inside of us, we are also empowered to share. And so we're gonna talk about that a little later down in the discussion. And so when he says baptizing them in the name of the Father and of the Son and of the Holy Spirit, teaching them to observe everything that I have commanded you. And lo, I am with you always. The part that I love is when it says remaining with you perpetually, regardless of circumstance and on every occasion, even to the end of the age. Now, I know for a lot of persons, when it comes on to sharing our faith and sharing the gospel, for a lot of persons, this is intimidating. This is scary, we don't feel equipped. Anybody there, you can always, you know, put up a thumbs up or one of those little reaction stuff. You can unmute, you can answer. But have you found that the concept of sharing your faith is something that is scary, especially if you're a new believer or you just feel inadequate? I see one, I saw one response. Alright, so it's only one person, I mean, that did read, no problem. So we have veterans in this place, no problem. So Acts one eight, if anybody can find that. We recognize that when he gave his mandate, he also gave an instruction. And we see that instruction in Acts one eight where he tells them to wait on the Holy Spirit that would give them power. And we see that in Acts one, verse eight. The other reason that we share our faith is out of our obedience to God. And so sharing our faith, it's something that we do as followers of Christ. We are called to live according to His teachings. And so by sharing the gospel, we demonstrate our commitment to His will and we are aligning our lives with His purpose. And so we have to consider that in the grand scheme of things, He has one agenda and it is to be reconciled with mankind, with each of us coming to know Him as Lord and Savior. And so He continues that He has always likened our obedience with our love for Him. And He's always likened our keeping of His commandments as us loving Him as well. And so if you look at John fourteen fifteen, it says, "If you love me, keep my commandments." That's very simple, very basic, very clear. And so if He commissioned and commanded us in Matthew twenty eight and it's in some of the other Gospels as well, you know, the Great Commission in different words, but the same expression in terms of us telling and baptizing and sharing the gospel. First Peter three fifteen says, "But in your hearts, revere Christ as Lord. Always be prepared to give an answer to everyone who asks you, to give the reason for the hope that you have, but do this with gentleness and respect." And then James one twenty-two, "Do not merely listen to the word, and so deceive yourselves. Do what it says." And the truth is, when it comes on to walking with Christ, when it comes on to living for Him, we don't get to make the rules. He makes the rules. And our greatest expression of our appreciation for the gift of salvation is to essentially say, "My life is not my own." And so that oftentimes requires us to be in uncomfortable circumstances in terms of doing things that that's outside of our comfort zone. But it is what He perceives and what He has declared and indicated is how we express our love to Him. And so I challenge each of us tonight that if we are believers and we are saying that we love God, we love Christ, we love what He has done for us then, and we're not sharing and we're not prepared to tell people about Jesus, then that's something that we need to hand over to Him. That's something that we need to make a part of our expression of our love for Him. And so we share because we love Jesus Christ. And so Second Corinthians five fourteen to fifteen, either way, Christ loves, controls us. Since we believe that Christ died for all, we also believe that we have all died to our old life. He died for everyone so that those who receive His new life will no longer live for themselves. Instead, they will live for Christ who died and was raised for them. So our love for Jesus compels us to share good news. And I don't know about you, but when something good is happening, you know, psychologists will tell you that, you know, happiness and joy is not fulfilled unless it's shared. That in order for that cycle of feeling joy and happiness to happen, it needs to be shared. People don't typically experience that in a corner by themselves. And there are so many examples of that, you know? When something happens, you know, we win, if we win gold, everybody makes an announcement about it. If somebody gets married, everybody makes an announcement about it. If a child is born, and we do it all the time at our church, you know, there is an announcement about it. And there's an announcement that the mother is with. And there's an announcement that the child weighs seven pounds and three ounces because there is an appreciation, there is joy, there is wanting to share the good that is in our lives. And so we have to ask ourselves if we're not sharing, you know? Do I truly believe that this is good? Do I truly believe that Christ has really made a big difference in my life? And am I ashamed or not? So you know, when the scriptures talk about being unashamed of the gospel of Jesus Christ, you know, that is something that we should always, you know, be checking ourselves for. Because if we are ashamed of Him here, we're gonna have challenges in the next life. And so John fifteen twelve to thirteen, the amplified version, says, "If you keep my commandments and obey my teachings," sorry, "you will remain in my love, just as I have kept my Father's commandments and remain in his love. I have told you these things so that my joy and delight may be in you and that your joy may be made full and complete and overflowing with joy. This is my commandment, that you love and unselfishly seek the best for one another, just as I have loved you. No one has greater love nor stronger commitment than to lay down his life for his friends. You are my friends if you keep on doing what I command you." And so the other thing I want to say is that we share because we love people. We share because we love the things that He loves. And so when we experience a transformative power of Christ in our lives, it should be natural for us to want to tell others and for wanting, and wanting persons to know Him too. This love fuels our desire to see others come to the saving knowledge of Jesus Christ so that they too can experience His grace, His peace, His salvation. And so what I have seen is that the deeper your relationship is with Christ, the closer He is to you, the easier it is for you to share about who He is and what He has done. Because regardless of your ability to quote scripture, your ability to defend scriptures and respond to different religion, religious positions, the one thing that is yours that cannot be edited by anybody else is your personal testimony. It's what Christ has done in your own life. And so I remember some years ago, we went to do an interview for Inner Delight and there was a particular talk show host that is known to not be a believer and he is known to give Christian groups a hard time. And we were there talking, talking in the early morning because you typically go to this radio station like four thirty in the morning for you to be on TV by six o'clock, seven o'clock. And we were talking and he was talking, asking why, you know, so many young people are serving God and, you know, what has God really done? And after he was done talking, I shared my testimony. And I said, "I can't speak to what your experience has been. I can't even speak to what was done or not done to you, but I can speak to what He has done in my life." And at that time, one of the freshest thing that Jesus had done for me was that He had healed me from endometriosis. And I shared with Him how He had healed my body and that there is no medical explanation for what God has done, for what has happened except God. And so I remember that man looked at me and he said, "I cannot discount that." And that was the end of the conversation. He had no other comment to make. He did not trouble any other member of our team because persons cannot undo what has happened with you and your Jesus. And so we always need to remember that we are not inviting persons to church. We're not inviting them to a movement. We're inviting them and introducing them to someone that they can have a relationship with, a real thriving, walking, talking, feeling emotion, day by day, relationship with. And if we are not experiencing Christ in that way, then it becomes more challenging for us to share. And so we're gonna talk about some of those things a little later. And so sharing the gospel is a cyclical extension of our love for Christ. Romans five five says, "And hope does not put us to shame because God's love has been poured out into our hearts through the Holy Spirit, who has been given to us." And John fourteen twenty-one says, "Whoever has my commands and keeps them is the one who loves me. The one who loves me will be loved by my Father and I too will love them and show myself to them." The more we are willing to pursue Christ in the way that He has called us to, is the more we experience a freedom and a knowledge of who He is. And so when we are looking to have conversations with people, because that's all we're doing. We're not preaching, we're having conversations with people and we're walking through experiences that we've had with them and sharing with them what has occurred. Then it becomes an extension of this dynamic love story that is playing out in our own lives. And so if you think about, you know, when persons are in school and they are in pursuit of a career and they land that quote-unquote dream job, the way they tell that story is very different from if they were in a job or a position that they did not desire to be in. And the same thing when people are newlyweds and how they communicate that story or when there is a new baby. And so we always need to also be guarding the freshness of our love with Jesus Christ. Is that love still fresh? Are we still looking to be in that fresh honeymoon season? Because the truth of the matter is, how we share in the beginning is usually out of the excitement and the joy. But there comes a point where we know nothing else but His authenticity and His goodness and His kindness to us. And so we share not just out of excitement, but we share out of a knowing of who this God is, who this Christ is that has been walking with me for X amount of years. So First Corinthians eight, three, I'm not sure if I read it before, but whoever loves God is known by God. So if you love me, he says, then keep my commandments. If you love me, then obey me, he says. And so keeping His commandments, obeying Him is an expression of our love for Him. And I'm gonna allow you to allow your mind to fill in the blanks that if we're not keeping commandments or obeying Him, then you can figure out what that means in His mind, okay? He's very clear about what He wants from us. And so while we're looking at why we share, the question is, who does the saving? Anybody wants to answer that? Who saves? You know, when we talk about sharing our faith, who is the one that's doing the saving of this soul and this lost person?
Jesus.
Jesus, alright, thank you. Anybody else? Alright, so the defense of our faith is an expression that I don't particularly like because I don't really think that God needs me to defend Him.
I was trying.
However. Okay, go ahead.
Interrupting you, I was trying so hard to unmute, but it wasn't happening. There's a verse of scripture that we quote so very often. It says, "It is not by might nor by power, but by my Spirit saves the Lord." Is by the Spirit of God. Yes, Jesus, the correct answer, because Jesus' Spirit and the Father are the same.
Right.
But that specific aspect of the Holy Spirit that work in our lives and I think needs emphasis as well.
So that is where we're gonna go, because the saving is done by the Holy Spirit. And we're gonna be talking about that now. And so it's important that we are ready to give an expression, an explanation for the hope that is in us. Yes, it is important to be able to understand practically sometimes, you know, that there, that these things help to lower barriers. So it is good if you are able to speak to, you know, why you believe the Bible. It is important if you're able to explain, you know, why you believe in the power of the Holy Spirit or that God is able to heal. All of those things are important. It's nice if you can explain why you believe in creation and not Big Bang. All of that is nice. But I want us to not forget that it is the Holy Spirit that saves. It is the Holy Spirit that creates the pull and the increase. John three five to six says, "Jesus answered, 'Verily, very truly I tell you, no one can enter the kingdom of God unless they are born of water and the Spirit. Flesh gives birth to flesh, but the Spirit gives birth to spirit.'" And so I wanna mention right here that the cornerstone of evangelism is prayer. It is a partnership with God in winning souls. And the second thing is to turn up for the appointment and be ready to be a vessel for the Holy Spirit to use. It's one thing to recognize and to know that the Holy Spirit saves, but it is for us to understand that He is calling us into a partnership in winning souls. So we're gonna talk about a scripture that tells us that one waters and another one plants and God brings the increase. So it is the Holy Spirit that does the saving work. And so how a person responds at the end of a conversation where you are pouring out your heart about what God did and didn't do for you, how that person's response is not for you to own or take personally because it is the Spirit that that person is responding to and you are simply a conduit, a vessel that the Holy Spirit is using at that time. And so I want us to know that. So we really don't need to be prepared for every possible conversation, but we just need to ensure that we are partnering with God, the one who holds our tomorrow and will guide us in every encounter. And so we just went on John, I want somebody to look up Ephesians one thirteen to fourteen, which is another expression of how we know that it is the Holy Spirit that does the saving. Ephesians chapter one thirteen to fourteen, any version is fine. Any takers?
Good night, NIB version.
Thank you.
And you also were included in Christ when you heard the message of truth, as thus love yourself also. And you believed, you were marked in Him with a seal of the promised Holy Spirit, who is a deposit guaranteeing our inheritance unto the redemption of those who are God's conditioners with serious love and glory.
What verse did you say I should stop at? Okay. Sorry, I apologize. Let's go again. So Ephesians one thirteen to fourteen, in Him, you also, when you heard the word of truth, the good news of your salvation and as a result, the leave in, you were stamped with the seal of the promised Holy Spirit, the one promised by Christ. And we're talking about when he said they should wait in Jerusalem so that they will receive power. That's what we're talking about right now. As owned and protected by God, the Spirit is the guarantee, the first installment, the pledge, a foretaste of. Of our inheritance until the redemption of God's own purchased possession, his believers to the praise of his glory. And so the work of someone coming to Christ is something that God takes on so personally. That he has made provision in bringing himself as a, a, a continuous source. When we accept Christ, he comes to live inside of us. And so it is his spirit that gives us one, the testimony of what has happened. We were not there, but our spirit testifies because this Holy Spirit that was there is inside of us. He is the one that saves because he is the one that brings the seal. He is the one that will, and we'll talk about it later, that convicts us of sin. And there are certain things that need to be present for a person to recognize that they need a savior, alright? And so first Corinthians, first Corinthians three, six to seven, which is the, the most popular. Passage that is used, I believe, when it comes on to, to the scriptures in terms of the Holy Spirit being the one to bring the increase. Anybody wants to read that one for me? Gonna ask that you, you know, consider your background before you read. First Corinthians three, six to seven.
I planted the seed in your earth and I put it watered it. But it was God who made it grow.
Continue. It is not important. Six to seven.
Okay, seven now. It is not important who does the planting or who does the watering. What's important is that God makes the seeds grow.
What's important is that God makes the seed grow. Now, we have to understand that in having the different conversations with people. People can be at any level of that journey. Somebody could have heard the gospel for the first time. Somebody could have had an experience and they were looking and they were waiting. And somebody could have had many questions and they're really looking for that answer. And so we need to remember and understand that it is God that makes the seed grow. It is, it is, it is his Holy Spirit that is going to draw men to himself. It is, it's his calling. And so the one who saves is the Holy Spirit. And as I said earlier, you don't need to prepare for every possible conversation, just partner with God. He knows your tomorrow and will guide you in every encounter. And so there are some things that the Holy Spirit does that allows the process of sharing the gospel to make sense. Because in order for the person to be able to accept Christ. And they would first rec, need to recognize that they need a savior. And so the Holy Spirit convicts us of sin. He, he allows us to know what, what's going on. The Holy Spirit is the source of regeneration or new birth. Um, the Holy Spirit is the one who indwells believers, new believers, old believers, middle, middle aged believers. He does that. The Holy Spirit is the one who seals and guarantees our salvation. The Holy Spirit is the one that walks us through the process of sanctification. The Holy Spirit is the one who empowers us to witness and the Holy Spirit is the one that intercedes for us. And so it's important for us to know that it is the Holy Spirit that does the saving work of bringing someone to Christ. And that is why I would have said earlier that the cornerstone of evangelism is prayer. It is coming into partnership with the Holy Spirit to accomplish his will for the people. That we are sharing with and talking with. And so it becomes important for us to recognize that our conversations are not just conversations for our entertainment. They are opportunities for the Holy Spirit to work, to interface with someone. To, to, to give them an opportunity to make them aware that they need him. And so. It is the conviction of sin that reveals to someone that they need a savior. And this conviction is the first step towards repentance and faith in Jesus Christ. The conviction of sin is the evidence, as I said before. And so when we look at John sixteen, verse eight, um if anyone has the NIV or the amplified. And then after John sixteen, verse eight, we're gonna do Romans eight, verse thirteen. Someone unmuted to read John sixteen, verse eight for me? Alright. Verse eight, thank you.
And this is the amplified. And he, when he comes, will convict the world about the guilt of sin. And the need for a savior and about righteousness and about judgment.
Okay, so it is the Holy Spirit that makes room for persons to become aware that they need Jesus. That they need a savior, that they need intervention, that they need help. Romans eight, verse thirteen. Anyone has that one? So we just did John sixteen, verse eight. Alright, I'm gonna read it. For if you're living according to the impulses of the flesh, you are going to die. But if you are living by the power of the Holy Spirit, you are habitually putting to death the sinful deeds of the body. You will really live forever. The reality is that regardless of how deep or dark a person is and far from God. Without the Holy Spirit, their situation is not going to change. It doesn't matter how many times we wait them, if they have not met the Holy Spirit and become aware of their need for a savior. Then they are incapable basically of handing their lives over to him. And so we, we need to remember that there is a work that is taking place, that the Holy Spirit is doing. Ahead of every conversation, before and behind every conversation that takes place. And that when we turn up in that conversation, it is important for us to position ourselves. To be what the Holy Spirit needs us to be in that moment, who he needs us to be. You know, what part of our story or experience with him that we will need. And so we're gonna talk about regeneration or the new birth, and we're also gonna talk about the indwelling of believers. People can't change without the Holy Spirit, as I just said. We can't, we can't ta, we can't talk people into salvation and into change. And one of the reasons why Teen Challenge continues, and I think we all know about Teen Challenge. It's a, a program to rehabilitate persons who have struggled with drugs. And there's a reason why Teen Challenge does as greatly and as well as it does. And it's because of the work of the Holy Spirit. Many, many other um programs have tried to mirror Teen Challenge's work and process without Jesus. And it has not been the same. Because the reality is that the Holy Spirit is the one that does that regenerating work when somebody comes to him. And if we are honest with ourselves and we are submitted to him, then we can speak to the changes that would have taken place in our own lives. In our own circumstances that would have caused us to know that, boy, God real. Can I get a amen? You can wave a hand or something. You're just me alone, just in a shock at the bigness and the realness of God. Because of how he has changed me.
Hallelujah, sister, hallelujah.
He has changed, alright, I'm not alone, God be praised. So. So the Holy Spirit regenerates believers, giving them new spiritual life. This is often referred to as what we call being born again or born of the Spirit. Now, John three, five to six, you can read it from the NIV, you can look for that. Jesus answered, very truly, I tell you, no one can enter the king, kingdom of God unless they are born of water and the Spirit. Flesh gives birth to flesh, but the spirit gives birth to spirit. And so if it is that we go into this conversation with just head knowledge. We can, we can tell them how many, how many, how many priests were at the canonizing activity of the Bible. We can tell them how many scripts of Isaiah that there is. None of that matters if we are going to be outside of the Holy Spirit. And, and I want to point out here that one of the things that we need to recognize is that more often than not. When we meet people who will tell you that they are atheists. Or they are agnostic, or that they are deconstructing their, 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 their faith. And no longer believe. More often than not, it is not a matter of head knowledge that it is, that is the problem. It is usually a hurt, a crisis of faith that has gone unchecked. And it's an emotional decision that is being hidden um under the guise of being a head decision. Or a knowledge based decision. And so when it comes on to talking to persons and they say, I don't believe because I'm atheist. The best thing you can ask that person is how did you come to that decision? Most times, there is a story about something that happened, a prayer that they prayed that went unanswered. A loved one who believed that died that they felt should not have died. That would have caused their emotions to go so dark that they have decided that there is no God. And so if we meet up on a person like that, it is not our talking that's going to cause change. It has to be an encounter with the Holy Spirit that is going to navigate the, the, the nuances of that person's heart. And meet them where they are. Titus three, five says, he saved us through the washing of rebirth and renewal by the Holy Spirit. The third thing is for us to realize that the Holy Spirit indwells believers. The Holy Spirit makes us his temple. And this indwelling presents is the mark of true salvation and it ensures that believers are never alone. And it is this indwelling that allows us to be able to carry his power everywhere and by extension. The, 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 the sensitivity to respond to a situation. As he gives us guidance, as he gives us directions. So Galatians five, sixteen to seventeen, can someone read that for me? Galatians five, sixteen to seventeen, and then we're gonna read Romans eight, verse nine. And then first Corinthians six, nineteen. So Galatians sixteen, Galatians five, sixteen to seventeen, that's the one I need first. Then Romans eight, verse nine, then first Corinthians six, verse nineteen. Any takers?
Galatians five, fourteen to fifteen.
No, sixteen to seventeen.
Sixteen to seventeen. Listen, I say then, walk in the spirit and ye shall not fulfill the lust of the flesh. For the flesh lusteth against the spirit and the spirit against the flesh. And these are contrary, the one to the other, so that ye cannot do the things that ye would.
Alright, so that's Galatians five. Unless a person has an encounter with the Holy Spirit. Nothing changes in their life. They're, you having a conversation with somebody that's struggling with alcohol. And they don't meet the Holy Spirit. They're, they don't have the power to, to distance themselves from the flesh. They don't have the capacity to be separated from their sinful nature. That they would have potential, potentially been walking in for years or whatever the situation may be. And so as we go to share the gospel, it is imperative that we, 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 we invite. We encourage, we ask the Holy Spirit, not just to go with us, not just to be inside of us. But to prepare the hearts of the persons that we are going to meet with so that they can encounter him quickly. So that they can begin to experience the regeneration and the indwelling of his power in their lives so that they can experience victory. Romans eight, verse nine. Anybody for that one?
Romans eight, verse nine. However, you are not living in the flesh, controlled by the sinful nature, but in the spirit. If in fact, the spirit of God lives in you, directing and guiding you. But if anyone does not have the spirit of Christ, it does not belong to him and is not a child of God.
So we know that the work of what is required for a person to, to encounter Christ and to change. Is the spirit. So I don't think we need to knock this point any harder. Think we're all clear that the one who saves, the one who does the transformative work, the one that is going to allow persons. To have an experience for them to be in awe of God is going to be the Holy Spirit. And so we should endeavor, we should seek to invite him into every conversation that we, we are having to give him. You know, the, the opportunity to reign and show off in those conversations for his glory, for his honor. And for that person to experience transformation. The next thing is that the Holy Spirit does the sealing and the guarantee of salvation. It, it can, it can be very interesting sometimes. You know, I've led persons to Christ and when it's all done, they're like, so what's next? You know, they're expecting to feel something, they're expecting, you know, I don't know, a shock. I'm not sure what they expected. I know for me, my, my encounter with Christ and coming to Christ, I came to Christ very young. So my, my recollection of that experience is, is, is um very different. I, I accepted Christ. Um, and I just remember after that, you know, crying and bawling and realizing that I needed Jesus. And then the next thing I knew, I wanted to say something and I couldn't say it. And I spent the rest of the, I, I basically woke up. At, at the end of it, I felt like I, I don't know, that was my experience. I had an experience that left me feeling like, wow. Jesus really flipped my life upside down, but I, I walked away from that experience not knowing what next to do. And it wasn't until years later, with persons showing me how to study, showing me how to, to read, how to. How to share my faith with others and so on, did, did I begin to actually grow. And so while the Holy Spirit does the sealing, we do have a responsibility as the body of Christ to support the work. By, by helping persons to walk and to find their way and to, to, to see examples. Right, of persons walking and persons living and having a community that they can be taught truth in. And so the Holy Spirit seals believers, marking them as God's own and serves as guarantee of their inheritance in Christ. This ceiling is a sign of security and assurance of salvation. And so I find that this seal was important to the point that Paul mentions it four times. He mentions it twice in Ephesians and he mentions it two times again in, 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 in second Corinthians. And so Ephesians one, thirteen to fourteen is when he talks about, in him you also. When you heard the word of truth, the good news of your salvation, put it up on the screen for you. And as a result, believed in him were stamped with the seal of the promised Holy Spirit. The guarant is the holy, the, sorry, let me go again. In him, you also, when you heard the word of truth, the good news of your salvation. And as a result, believed in him were stamped with the seal of the promised Holy Spirit. The spirit is the guarantee, the first installment and the pledge of foretaste of our inheritance. Until the redemption of God's own purchased possessions, his believers to the praise of his glory. And this is a passage that we read earlier. So all four references, he is talking, so the four references that I'm mentioning is Ephesians, chapter one, thirteen to fourteen. Ephesians, chapter four, verse thirty, where he talks about not grieving the Holy Spirit. Who is the one who sealed you for the day of redemption, second Corinthians one, twenty one to twenty two. No, it is God who makes both of us and, and you stand firm in Christ. He anointed us. He anointed us, set his seal of ownership on us and put his spirit in our hearts as a deposit guaranteeing what is to come. And then second Corinthians five verse five, now the one who has fashioned us, what is that? I don't know what just happened. I'm home alone and I just heard a lot of things tumbled over. And as you can see, I'm sitting right here. Let us continue.
Amen.
Second Corinthians five, verse five, now the one who has fashioned us for this very purpose is God who has given us the spirit as a deposit guaranteeing what is to come. So the Holy Spirit does the sealing and the guaranteeing of salvation. And we're gonna talk a little bit more about that because I saw the question in the chat, the person, someone is asking, okay, so what, what role does the person have in that process? The person has a, a, a role in responding to the prompting of the Holy Spirit. So remember that Ephesians also tells us, yeah, you don't want to grieve the Holy Spirit. If he's talking to you, if he's prompting you and you're choosing to push against him and not respond to him, then that is you resisting the Holy Spirit. There's nothing that you as the person that's sharing the message can do about that. That is a hard work that needs to take place between that person and the Holy Spirit. And we really don't need to get caught up in that, outside of interceding and praying for that person and allowing the Holy Spirit to show us how to continue in that direction or on that, in that conversation. There, there have been times while I'm sharing the gospel and I have a friend who laughs about it a lot, where after going down a particular line, especially with persons who have a lot of questions and they may position themselves as persons who are science-based or persons who are um atheist, um among other groups, and they have a lot of questions. And there comes a point where I will say, okay, so if I satisfactorily answer this question now, are you going to accept Christ? Because there comes a point where they just need to choose to surrender. And there is, there is nothing that we can do about that part of the process that is for them to do. And so, we also need to, to remember that the scriptures tell us that we should do it in a respectful way, that we should share what we are sharing and be ready to give on it a defense, but do it in respect and in love. And so, if our conversations are becoming inflammatory, then we really need to consider who is this giving glory to? You know, is this for me to feel good that I know what I know? Or is this an opportunity for the Holy Spirit? And if we have to second guess the Holy Spirit being glorified in a situation, then it is probably time for us to, to back away and give that person space and time and even ourselves space and time too. Because sometimes, when, when we find ourselves going down that road, it's, it's not so much that the person needs to know, sometimes it's, it's something that is struck inside of us and we are offended for God. No, you can't be offended for him, he don't need, he don't need it to be offended for him. He needs it to stay under the submission and the surrender of his spirit so that he can have a vessel that is an asset and not a liability. And sometimes that means shutting up. Sometimes that means, you know, agreeing to disagree. Sometimes that means going on the side of kindness to give room for there to be a conversation number two, or that the door can still be open for the person who is going to come after you to water the seed that was planted. And so, those are things for us to, to consider and to remember as we look at the fact that even in doing his sealing and the guarantee, he's also doing a work of sanctification. That work of sanctification in sharing the gospel is for us and sometimes for that new believer, but more often than not, it is for us. So while he sanctifies, while we are turning up to share our faith with people, we need to remember that he is also going to be sanctifying us in the process. Because we will need to be like Christ in the face of offense, in the face of accusation, to do it in a way that God be glorified and that our wills are submitted to him, just as Christ submitted himself to his father as unto death. And sometime death for us right now means feeling embarrassed, feeling less than or feeling like the person this way. Sometime I have to take a condition for Jesus, it's just psycho. You know, he took big this for us and he still went to the cross. And so, we have to consider that when he says, take up, Mike, take up your cross and walk with me that it's, it's, it really wouldn't be that much of a big deal if it wasn't uncomfortable. He wouldn't have had to say it and emphasize it if it was going to be a simple ask. He says it the way he says it because he needs us to understand that there is gravity, there is weight, there is um sacrifice that's going to be required in us walking with him. And it's no less different when we choose to share the gospel with people because it is still a choice for us to do so. And so, the next thing is that the Holy Spirit empowers us to witness, and we've spoken about that. And so, we're gonna go through this because we touched on it multiple times. And so Acts one, chapter, Acts chapter one forty-five. On one occasion, excuse, while he was eating with them, he gave them this command, do not leave Jerusalem, but wait for the gifts my father promised, which you have heard me speak about. For John baptized with water, but in a few days you will be baptized with the Holy Spirit. Acts chapter one verse eight, we read it earlier, so I won't read it again. And so, at the end of the day, the Holy Spirit empowers us to be a witness because he lives inside of us. And it is that witness that we need to go with us when we are sharing the truth of Jesus Christ, so that he will guide our words, guide our thoughts. And I don't know if this has happened to you, but this is something that happens to me all the time, where something that I read the day before or the morning is what is needed in a conversation at lunchtime. And so, that is why I was saying that the cornerstone of evangelism is prayer and partnership with the Holy Spirit. It's, it's us choosing to build that relationship that is going to empower us to be consistent in our conversations with people about who this God is that we serve and love and honor in our day-to-day lives. Um, for the person who asked the question in the chat, I don't know, you can let me know if that question has been answered for you. And then finally, the Holy Spirit intercedes for us. The Holy Spirit intercedes for believers, praying on their behalf in accordance to God's will, especially when they do not know how to pray for themselves. And this is a big thing because sometimes persons are asking, sometimes persons are waiting for a word from God. And the truth is that he has sent us with it and we may have chosen not to see it. Uh, and so we have to consider how we show up in this world and when we choose to respond or not respond, that we could be potentially muzzling and answer prayer for somebody who wants to know that God sees them. There are countless examples that I have heard and experienced where persons are saying, okay, God, if you're real, respond, send someone. I know that when I had my first crisis of faith, and I said first because it happens from time to time in your walk. You know, I've been walking with Jesus for, for over twenty-five years now, and every time I said that, it, it just sound, wow, I'm in shock. Um, but I, and, and for anybody who knows me knows that I've shared this before, that I wrote God a very long letter. But the person he gave a word to respond to my saying to him, I need to know that you're real if I'm going to trust you, was somebody that I had not seen in six years, who drove from her house out of her devotion, only knowing that I had passed for this particular high school and came to me with a word that was an answer to my prayer for me to know that not only is God real, but that he sees me. And so, as the Holy Spirit intercedes on our behalf, he also mobilizes us to partner with him to answer some of the prayers and the requests that are made by believers and unbelievers as he walks with us and encourages us and prompts us to share our faith with people. And then finally, for this section, Romans eight thirty-four. Who then is the one who condemns? No one. Christ Jesus who died more than that, who was raised to life, is at the right hand of God and is also interceding for us. So we are at the final segment of tonight's discussion. And we're gonna talk about, quite briefly, and we're gonna dive into the details next week. You know, why do we defend our faith? Any, any thoughts? Anybody want, you can either drop it in the chat? Or you can unmute. And the person who asks the question, what, what role does the will of the person to be saved play in then coming to God? I, I believe I answered that earlier, you can let me know if, if there is a gap in my response to you. But anybody knows why? The first answer is like the first answer at the beginning of the presentation. Someone has unmuted. Somebody says we are commanded to. And ding 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 ding, that's the answer. There's a biblical mandate. The Bible tells us that we should be prepared to give an answer to everyone. And that first Peter three verse fifteen, but in your hearts, revere Christ as Lord. Always be prepared to give an answer to everyone who asks you to give the reason for the hope that you have, but do this with gentleness and respect. The next reason I would say that we need to defend our faith is for truth and clarity. Somebody put in the chat that the culture demands it. Basically, that there's so much happening that we need to be in a position where we can respond to the things that's happening in the culture, and I agree with that. So truth and clarity. Um, Jude tells us that we should be prepared to contend for the faith against perversion and the teachers of perversion. And so, we are looking at being in a place where we, we recognize that there are those who desire to pervert um the faith, those who want to make everything acceptable. And so, it is critical, it is important that we contend for the faith and that we are vigilant and looking out for those who may want to pervert it. And who would want to give a license to exploit God's grace for immorality? And for those who would want to create an excuse for their, for their reason for denying Christ. And so, it's important that we recognize that there's a biblical mandate and that there is need for truth and clarity. And another thing is that there is need to protect, for the protection of the faith and the community. And so, I'm gonna tell you the reference in a minute. But.
Sorry, you said protection of what?
Of the faith community, the church, the body of Christ. So, Acts twenty, verse twenty-eight to thirty. Keep watch over yourselves and all the flock of which the Holy Spirit has made you oversee us. Be shepherds of the church of God, which he bought with his own blood. I know that after I leave, savage wolves will come in among you and will not spare the flock. Even from your own number men will arise and distort the truth in order to draw away disciples after themselves. Defending the faith protects the church community from false teaching and harmful ideologies. It's important for us to be able to give a representation and an answer for the things that's taking place and to respond to the things that's happening in culture. And one of the, the, the fastest growing trends, and we're gonna talk about it more next week, is as I said earlier, this concept of the deconstruction of faith. This idea that um I am, I am going to dismantle all of what I have believed for years because there are inconvenient aspects. Um, we're going to look at different things that speak to the core of what we believe and just being able to understand that there are really only four things that people contend on when it comes on to believing in Christ. Alright? And then finally, I think I said that before, right? We're almost done, don't worry, only two slides left. Why do we defend our faith? The strengthening of our own faith. Second Corinthians ten verse five, we demolish arguments and every pretension that sets itself up against the knowledge of God, and we take captive every thought to make it obedient to Christ. The more we understand why we believe what we believe and we have a response to the things that's changing in this world and what's happening in this world, is the more we are able to solidify within ourselves who we believe in and why we believe in him. And then we also defend our faith as a witness to others. Um, Philippians one verse seven, it is right for me to feel this way about all of you since I have you in my heart. And whether I am in chains or defending and confirming the gospel, all of you share in God's grace with me. We have a responsibility to respond because we have a responsibility to share the truth. And so, it is not okay for us to be silent. So engaging in apologetics and defending the faith strengthens believers. It's understanding and the conviction, making our faith more resilient. It provides the unique opportunity to depend on the Holy Spirit. To have the Holy Spirit minister through us and experience how he's able to guide and navigate conversations. These are things that a book cannot teach you. But until we are walking in a situation where we are depending on the Holy Spirit to guide us through something that's difficult or uncomfortable, and this is not just with sharing our faith, this is just walking this life's journey with him. These, these journeys, these walks, these experiences act as remembrances, memorials, monuments on our journey with Christ so that we can reflect, we can pull for, we can recall that yes, when David says the things that he says in, 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 in the Psalms, it can resonate with us because we are actively walking and fellowshipping with this Christ. And so, a well-reasoned defense of faith can be a powerful witness to non-believers demonstrating the credibility and the truth of the Christian message. There are only four things that you really need to know to defend your faith and to, to share your gospel. The first thing is your personal testimony. What Christ has done for you is what Christ has done for you, and we're gonna go through this and fill in this table next week. We need to know who Jesus Christ is, who is the person of Jesus Christ because this is one of the things that is usually very defining in terms of the differences with other religions. And why it is that we do not um agree with them in terms of being our brothers of faith. The inerrancy of scripture, understanding that the Bible is the infallible word of God and knowing why you believe that. Knowing why it is that you have accepted it, being able to respond to it as well. And finally, the condition called sin. These four aspects are the things that will separate us in being able to give a practical response. But it is also one of the things that we need to know and be able to contend with as we choose to defend the faith and give an account for the hope that is in us. And so, if there are any questions at this time, we can take any additional questions that I have not answered from the chat, and then we look forward to going deeper next week. And hopefully, you will reflect and consider how you can do things a little differently this week if you have not done it. And um come next week, ready to give a testimony about how the Holy Spirit led a conversation with you in the coming week. Any questions? Any questions? Okay, there seems to be no question, that's okay, that's fine. That was either very clear, we guys were not present, but I'm gonna work with clear. Alright, so thank you so much for the privilege and the opportunity to share with you tonight. Um, I really do hope that as we set this framework. That we are going into next week with an understanding. That this is something that we need to do in our expression of our love for Jesus. And that it is something that he commands us to do. And that we need to separate anything that is preventing us from being steadfast in this. This era of our lives in terms of obedience and allowing ourselves to be used by him and partnering with him. As he prepares his remnant. Finally, remembering that at the end of this month, we will have friends and family Sunday. And so practice, practice, practice all your conversations and invite persons to come out and have breakfast with us. On the twenty-fifth of August at Church of the Open Bible, seven A M, August twenty-fifth. And we will be seeking to have fellowship over food at the end of the service on that morning. So please invite persons that you would have had fresh new conversations with. And we look forward to deepening those conversations with persons um on the twenty-fifth and beyond. Those are my few words in Jesus' name and I do pray that each person has been blessed tonight and would have heard directly from the Holy Spirit.
Amen, open your mic and say amen to our sister, uh, to God on behalf of what you've heard. And I pray that your word will resonate.
Amen.
Amen, amen, amen.
Amen, amen.
Amen.
Again, I thank you, Sister Latry, um, I want us to, to be assured that. God is working it out on our behalf. And the Holy Spirit is working in all of us and we have the responsibility to respond to the Holy Spirit. So we give God thanks for tonight, give thanks to our sister. At this time, I'm going to pick on somebody, pray the closing prayer. Uh, Sister Ly. Are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Alright, could you pray, pray the closing prayer?
Father, we thank you for bringing us together another night to share your word and to learn from the presenter. Mighty God, it deepens things of you. Father God, we thank you for the word, we thank you for the clarity in which Gabrielle was able to speak tonight, mighty God. That your words came true and, and I know, Lord, with clarity to many of us tonight. I thank you, Lord God, for what you have done for us this evening and for all that you are going to do. We create our hearts, we'll be open, we will practice what we have taught tonight. And mighty God, that Gabrielle will come next week again, well charred and ready to impact our lives. And that we will come with receptive hearts. We thank you for what you have done, mighty God, and we ask you to dismiss us all with your choices blessings. And may we all have a good night's rest in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen, we all be with you all.